Good morning and welcome to the June 14, 2023 city council meeting. We'll begin with the invocation from Councilman Nichols, followed by the pledge of allegiance, if you will please stand.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and the opportunity to serve you and the city people of Tyler. May we recognize your presence and allow your love and compassion for all to flow through us. May we respect all of your creations as we make decisions concerning the business of our city. May we allow the servant's heart you gave us represent those who have chosen us. May we be humble in all we say and do, and may we remember how you came and lived for us, then died for us, so we could have your life in us, so we could serve others. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with approving the minutes from May the 10th, 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. P1, Kedrick.
Morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Yeah, I had a P1 before me that's request that city council consider accepting the distinguished budget presentation award for this 2022-2023 budget document from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. This is our 16th year to receive this award, and it is judged by a panel of peers that are members of the Government Finance Officers Association. And what they look for is several categories. They look at it as a policy document, a financial plan, an operation guide, and a communication device. And so, we have, we are down proficient in all four categories, and we actually have the award here before you today. Lauren has the copy in office. This is the actual award. It hangs in our front lobby over in the finance building. And Lauren is the one that works very diligently on the budget document. And we're just requesting that you all accept this award for the 2022-2023 budget document from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada.
Well, great job, Kedrick, Lauren. Are y'all about to round the room on places to put all these awards? So, did we take action on this, or we just?
There's no action needed, and so it is just a presentation on the award, which I get every year. Should've grabbed, had y'all grab a picture of it while y'all were all down there. Would y'all mind going down again to get this?
Sure, you should. Lauren.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Great.
We come before you this morning to ask you to consider adopting some changes to our Chapter 19 ordinances that govern our Lake Tyler, both east and west. What we're looking at is prohibiting alcoholic beverages in very specific locations that it'll be limited to concession stand one, Hill Creek Park, East Side Park, Howie 64 Park and Bow Ramps, and the general parking areas. What this ordinance does not prohibit, it doesn't prohibit alcohol in all the designated areas, private residence, businesses, or any lease owned property, any security area specific, the public parking lots, parking areas, and the bow ramps. It also allows you to bring alcohol into these areas and then transform to the authorized areas, picnic areas, camping areas, and things like that. This would create an extra tool for us to help us with some of the enforcement issues that we've had over the last couple of years with unauthorized, unannounced, spontaneous large events that have been causing some problems within these very specific locations.
So, can you go into more detail of what's going on that is objectionable and who's? I realize that the police don't want some of this behavior, but are other people involved with complaining, or?
Yes, sir. We've had numerous citizens contact our department, as well as City Hall, complaining about these large events, these alcohol large events being held in the parking lots, blasting loud, obnoxious type activities going on. We've had some recent events with some of the events that are considered trail rides that are coming into the area, occupying these spaces, both with large gatherings with livestock, and we've also had complaints of horse racing. But we do have ordinances in place that we can take enforcement action on this. And then it's mostly the unannounced special large events that deal specifically with alcohol parties would probably be a generalized word that I could use.
These are probably driven social media pop-up parties show up.
Yes, sir. We have a couple of our units monitor social media, and sometimes they'll be popped up. Like a few months ago, there was going to be a big event that was going to make a turnover to kill them. They changed their mind at the last minute, but because we have units that monitor this type of activity, we knew that they were going to show up over here specifically in the lake area. So it allowed us to be proactive and have some of our resources in place. And then, this basically adds another tool to our toolkit to help us. And with this restriction, it will also allow them to know, excuse me, that the activity's prohibited. So therefore, we're looking for a general deterrence is what we're looking for.
What are the hours of operation for this, or is it in the hour?
No, ma'am, it's all the time.
All the time?
Yes, sir.
You know, and I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna sound tolerant, but I'm born and raised here, and people always went to the, down by the dam. And it was almost like dragging Broadway, you know, in high school. You know, people would go out to the dam, and people would be lined up on both sides, and you'd drive up and down, and the guys were hopping up the girls, the girls hopping up the guys. And back then, you could drink at 18, and so people were drinking. But back then, it was, it was an atmosphere of people just enjoying people's company, and it wasn't the horse racing, and I don't know if there's been guns out there, but back then, it was always tame.
Oh, yes, sir. And we're not looking to prevent people from having a good time. One of the other things that we have to remember, we already prohibit alcohol in every other city park within our city.
That's right.
That's governed by Chapter 8 of our ordinances, whereas Chapter 8 specifically excludes Lake Tyler, it's governed under Chapter 19. So us prohibiting alcohol within our parks and recreational areas, this is not a new concept to our city.
Assistant Chief Long, when you said large groups, you mean you're talking about 20 people?
I'm talking about hundreds, hundreds to 200 large gatherings that come out there. And sometimes with large gatherings, and it's not to say all large gatherings, they do, they come with violence sometimes, and that's what we're looking at to prevent that.
So what happens if you go out there and they're having a party, and somebody got a six pack of beer? What's the, what's the penalty?
Well, if they're in violation of the ordinance, it's a citation. There would be written a citation. Now, what we'll do in the beginning, and we are, we'll have signage placed in all the locations, and for the, our policy, once the ordinance goes into effect, it's for a minimum of the first two weeks, we will, we will issue warnings. Because what we're looking for is voluntary compliance with the signage and all that. And then after that grace period, it's up to the individual officer, she or he, it'll be up to their discretion to how it's handled as far as writing citations, just like any other citation.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions for Chief Long, but I visited with Ms. Cassandra beforehand, and I made some notes on your agenda item, but there were a couple corrections to make on the ordinance itself, so just make note of that.
Okay.
Can you tell us what they have?
Uh, there are just some grammatical changes.
Do we need to mention that in the motion?
Yeah, I think if they are just minor.
Okay.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Take over, ma'am.
Thank you.
Guess we might have to find somewhere else to go party on the weekend. I'm kidding.
Just don't sit in the parkhouse, sir. Take over, ma'am.
Don't drag up and down the dam.
Put your tan on.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
I'm here to talk about agenda item number M1, which is a contract award for the West Side Waste Water Treatment Plant Sledge Lagoon Cleanout Project. So at West Side, we have a 5 million gallon volume sledge lagoon. It's primarily used right now for redundancy to our solids dewatering building, our sledge dewatering building that was constructed in 2015. So when that building is down, and we can't treat the sludge, we can't press it, a truck's down, we don't have an operator, we have somewhere to put the sludge, which is pretty important. Well, that, that sledge lagoon is full, and so it has a total capacity of about 5.2 million gallons. And right now, we had estimated that that's going to be about 5,000 dry tons of sludge that need to be moved and removed from this lagoon. For our permit, we get to capacity, we need to remove it, so we have redundancy for our process. So we issued an RFP in late March. We had three companies that proposed, Denali, Cinegro, and Enviro Dredge. Denali and Cinegro were responsive, provided all information. We evaluated these based on cost, schedule, and their ability to meet our project requirements. Denali scored very well on all three of those. Their estimated completion is August of this year. We're hoping to get them started just about as soon as we award this. Their cost per dry ton was $347.60, which is a very good price. So I'm here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Denali Water Solutions LLC for the West Side Waste Water Treatment Plant Sledge Biosolids Lagoon Cleanout in an amount not to exceed $2,750,000 at $347.60 per dry ton of biosolids removed, and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
So where's it taken, landfill?
Yes.
Kate, has Denali worked for the city before?
Denali has not worked for us before, but they come highly recommended by, you know, we've been working with some other engineering firms for our wastewater treatment plant master plan. They've also done work with some different municipalities that I've worked with when I was in the Metroplex, and they come highly recommended.
Kate, is it, it increased, I mean, why are we having to do this now? Increased demand there?
We have to do this because we were, obviously, the sledge lagoon was at capacity. We were also having issues with our ammonia levels leaving the plant, so we needed to have a place to move, because when we can't store it in the lagoon, we have to store it in the processes, and that makes it so that potentially you have some issues balancing that coming out of the plant. And so, this is, this is going to be very helpful in bringing those ammonia levels down.
If we do this now, what's the estimated next time we have to do this?
Well, 2015, the lagoon was, I'm thinking probably, and Mike's back there, might be, he might be able to tell me when he thinks.
Oh, so this isn't the first time we've done this, huh?
I think so.
Oh, it is?
Well, okay. What we used to do before we had a sludge watering facility was all of the digested sludge would be routed to the lagoon, and then, actually, we had a contract at that time with Cinegro, and they went and land applied it for us. They pumped it out of the lagoon. But then we decided to start processing our own sludge, and so this is the first time we've had to do this separate from having a contractor.
Got you.
Yeah, okay. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
If we do this now, is there an estimated, like, every five years, is it once every 10 years?
It's very dependent on the conditions of the wastewater that we receive. If we have a lot of collection line problems, a lot of sand, silt that comes into the plant, of course, a lot of that, it allows, the lagoon allows us to clean out the plant as that stuff comes in. So that's where that goes. So if we have a lot of raining, rainy years, we're going to put more in the lagoon. If it's a normal year, of course, we won't. I would estimate at least 10, maybe less eventually. And in the, in the wastewater master plan, we're going to have some changes that will allow us to actually press sludge out of the lagoon, so it would actually become part of our operations, dewatering the sludge. So that could extend it any time.
That's going to be my next question. If this was a reoccurring thing more often than not, what are we planning to do, you know, future?
Yeah, and right now, we don't have that ability to press. Plus, the sludge is so old, you couldn't press it anyway. But in the future, that's what we're hoping to go to, is if we do have to use it for redundancy, we can then press out of the, so actually bring it out, run it through the treatment process, and dispose of it in the landfill like we do typically before we put it in.
That's what you do at South Side, you press it?
Yeah. South Side and West Side.
Kate, doesn't all the septic pump trucks, don't they all go to the West Side and none to the South Side?
Correct.
So then it's probably more condensed material that comes to the West Side versus the South Side?
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
Move to approve M1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kate. Thanks. Chris?
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Agenda item M2 is just the next step in the process where the demolition of 515 East Irwin Street, the Tyson House. May the 10th, council approved a engineer contract to oversee demolition, and now this will be the follow-up contracts for the people actually doing the work. So, agenda item M2 is a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a small, medium contract with the Air Quality Associates Incorporated for the asbestos removal project located at 515 East Irwin Street not to exceed the cost $118,333.
You know, to tear down a building, there's sure a lot of removals and studies, and it's a process.
Especially going at that age.
Yeah, it's amazing. Any questions for Chris?
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
Agenda item M3 involves the same location, 515 East Irwin Street. This would be after the asbestos removal. This would be for the actual demolition reconstruction. It's a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a small, medium contract with the Air Quality Associates Incorporated for the asbestos removal project located at 515 East Irwin Street not to exceed the cost $118,333.
You know, to tear down a building, there's sure a lot of removals and studies, and it's a process.
Especially going at that age.
Yeah, it's amazing. Any questions for Chris?
Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3.
Agenda item M3 involves the same location, 515 East Irwin Street. This would be after the asbestos removal. This would be for the actual demolition reconstruction. It's a request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a small, medium contract with Cactus Abatement and Demolition LLC for the demolition project located at 515 East Irwin Street for costs not to exceed $280,171.
So how do they do it? Trac-o?
Yes.
Chris, when, when they do the demolition, will your department or another city department let all the neighboring businesses know that demolition at this location is about to occur? The reason why I ask, I've had a couple of businesses ask me what's going on over there, and I've explained the process we're going through, and they said, hey, just give us some notice.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're actually, since there is a project going on there right now, we've actually met with Fritcher, and so we're going to work with them once they're finished with the, they're not going to completely improve and put the asphalt in, because if we come in and do the demolition, then we're going to tear up the asphalt. So once they get down and they put down the base, the cement, or whatever, before they lay the asphalt, they're going to hold off, then the actual demolition would occur. But yes, we will notify.
So how long will it take?
I believe we go back to what they said on the May 10th, when I talked to the engineer. He was looking at eight weeks for the, I think he's looking like six weeks now for the asbestos removal, and then follow-up of eight weeks on the actual demolition.
When is the plan to get it started, Chris?
As soon as, I think we're looking at P and P bonds would be the last thing. Once we approve, then they'll go ahead and get those, and then we'll expedite. I think he was, I think when we talked to him before, he was looking, he was talking like two weeks.
All right, any other questions for Chris?
Move to approve M3.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
M4, Darren. Morning.
As I do every year, we do every year, we're going to come to you with our 2023 street reconstruction project. This year, we have, first, I want to start out, we are going to formally request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Reynolds and Kay for the construction of the 2023 street reconstruction project in the amount of $4,784,777.85. That is a full project. Right now, we have, as part of that project, we have nine streets totaling about 12 lane miles worth of reconstruction. And I know you're probably going to ask, what does previous FBR mean right there on Blue Mountain? That's where we stopped last time, where we have already had a full-depth reclamation. So we are starting where we stopped and then continuing that on to Old Jackson Road. So, but as you all may remember, the reason we do this is our pavement condition index, our pavement condition just gets below two vocal, we cannot salvage it any longer. We cannot do an overlay, we cannot do a seal coat, anything like that. It is basically beyond hope, so we have to actually replace it. Right now, we have a task for bids on April 9th. We open bids in late May. And one thing about this project is that it includes some inlet repairs, 18 inlets on Grande, where the throats and some of the curb rock rounded are in jeopardy or failing. And we also have some concrete alley repairs that are a part of this. So as you can see by the map, these streets are generally in the south side of town. And Half Center approved this yesterday. For the funding for it, you do have the cost estimate, the bid tab. We had two bidders, LNS, Lone Star, and Reynolds and Kay. Reynolds and Kay was the low bidder. So at this time, I want to go ahead and show you also, we are not paying for all of this out of the Half Center fund. We are paying for 4.472 million out of Half Center. The street department curb and gutter fund is paying for the Grande inlet, inlet repairs, and concrete alley repairs fund is paying for the concrete alley, the alley repair fund, so at $274,445 to give the total. So we are, what we did is we added, worked with Sarah Fratton over in maintenance, worked with her to get basically an economy of scale on adding those improvements that are needed. Instead of going out for separate contracts for those, we just put it all together to get an economy of scale on this one bidder and one project. So at this time, I'd like to request the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Reynolds and Kay for the construction of the 2023 street reconstruction project in the amount of $4,784,777.85.
And years ago, there was a fund that was created, Fund 103, or some fund that were property tax goes into it to goes towards streets?
Yeah, about two pennies that go from your property tax levy that goes to Fund Street Maintenance Repair. That fund pays for the majority of your seal coating and crack sealing that you do throughout the city, as well as, you know, the one thing that you showed a minute ago is on the repairs that are being done for the alleyways, for example. That's being done from Fund 103. So, so that's where you're able to utilize those, those funding source for, for that maintenance type of stuff, the repairs, whereas the, and then with Half Center, you're continuing to do overlays, which is really, you're tearing out the street and putting a new street in, so that level of reconstruction.
Okay. Any other questions for Darren?
Yes, Darren, what, in your opinion, are the leading causes that result in reconstruction as opposed to overlay, or what causes it to get to this condition?
What caused the PCI, or pavement condition index, to get so low that we're, it's kind of beyond hope?
Just rid of it, yeah.
Beyond hope, hard to see age, or it's traffic. Sometimes we try to get the maintenance done, but we just don't have the funding for it. So we're unable to do an overlay every seven to 10 years, or a, or a seal coat every, as often as we need to. And other times, it was just poor construction, or just some, just general failures.
Are there, yeah, are there any base failures that?
There are base failures that come into that. Some of it could be by the springs, the groundwater we have here caused by that, and just.
Is there, did they, I mean, did they address the base before they go back and redo the road?
Yes, this is a full-depth reconstruction.
Okay. So what, what happens on Holly Tree Drive? Is that a reconstruction?
It is a reconstruction. That's correct.
It's just bad?
Yes, it is.
Darren, to that point on Holly Tree Drive, and I've brought this up to both Ed and Cameron, there's a lot of construction taking place on the backside of Holly Tree right now, closer to the Cumberland area. And before we go tear up Holly Tree Drive, reconstruct it, it's a beautiful road, and we have all these construction vehicles coming in. I don't want them to tear up a brand-new road, and so I'd like to see some coordination there with the construction that's currently taking place to make sure either we put a weight limit restriction entrance to Holly Tree where big trucks can't get through and tear up a new road, or some kind of requirement where they have to use Cumberland to come in, or we simply just wait until they finish, you know, those big construction projects in the back. Because what I don't want to see is a brand-new road torn up by construction that's currently taking place, so that, just, you know, I just want you to make note of that and coordinate that project, and then maybe we can get with Cameron also and, you know, figure out some kind of weight restriction or something for Holly Tree Drive.
We can, we can do that.
Good. Thank you, Darren.
All right.
Move to approve M4.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M5.
For a light polar aggressive, the council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an escrow agreement. into an escrow agreement with Esposito Residential LLC, authorizing acceptance of an escrow amount of $19,192.75 for public improvements related to Centennial Parkway development to be completed at a future date determined by the city. So, I wanted to show you really what we're talking about here. As you can see, everybody, I'm sure most everybody knows, the, there were some quadplexes that were built years ago, along with a couple of duplexes down in the south, in the south side of Centennial that was annexed into the city, and then the developer went belly up. And as part of the requirement for that, for development, they are required in sections, UDC sections 10103 and 10142, build the infrastructure required to serve that development. So as part of that, the master street plan also shows Centennial as a three-lane major collector, with one lane each way with a continuous left turn lane. So as part of that, they will be required to expand the width of Centennial Parkway. Now, Esposito Realtors built, excuse me, acquired two of the three quadplexes that are down there, and two of them were pretty much finished out, and the other one was not, they are not buying that one, but they bought two of the quadplexes, buildings with eight units. So, and the quadplexes and the duplexes on the other side are, were plotted as one lot. So there are a total of, actually a total of 51 lots, but two of them are really common areas, so we divided about 49, 49, we considered 49 total lots, and they are required to purchasing two lots. So two 49s of the total estimated cost of about $391,000 worth of improvements to Centennial. That's where we came up with the 100, excuse me, $19,000. So. We are requesting that the City Council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement, an escrow agreement with Esposito, authorizing acceptance of escrow amount of $19,192.75 for public improvements related to Centennial Parkway to be completed at a future date determined by the city. This will be a 10-year agreement, by the way.
Any questions for Darren?
Yeah, so Darren, this is, there's three buildings out there, is that right?
There are three quadplexes and two duplexes, I believe.
Oh, okay. And they are purchased...
Picture the map.
And they, they are purchasing two of them, or three of them?
They have purchased two of them.
Two of them?
Two of the quadplexes.
Okay. And I guess the, it was a bank that owned them before, and I guess still owns two of them?
There, there is a bank, one bank that owns the land, and one bank that owns the actual structure.
So we don't, we don't really know what's happening with the two remaining that Esposito Development's not purchasing?
That is correct.
And Esposito, is it development? Uh, residential?
Residential.
Esposito residential. So they're refurbishing, bringing this, bringing everything up to code and ready to lease out or sell the ones they've purchased, right?
That's correct. In fact, I believe they already have a temporary CO for at least two of the units. They're actually already starting.
So we're making some progress out there, beginning this, it's just the two remaining, I guess, to find out?
The one remaining quad, and the two remaining duplexes.
Okay. So if those are purchased by another developer, will they also have to help contribute to the, okay?
That is correct. Every lot will have to contribute.
So moved.
I have one more question. On the sewer infrastructure, did the sewer infrastructure ever get put in for that, Darren?
Yes, the sewer infrastructure, just for those two buildings, is, is in place. Though the other one, and that may be the one reason I did not purchase the other quadplex, I'm speculating. But because of sewer, I went back and looked, and the sewer does serve those two buildings. They did install it.
And then the Freedom Trail over to the right, they're, they're not purchasing that, but did they ever get sewer to those two?
They did not get sewer or water.
So the infrastructure's not there for that?
The only sewer is there is just for these two quadplexes. That is correct.
All right, I got a motion by McKeller, need a second.
Second.
All right, got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Darren. Cameron.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Cameron Williams, Traffic Engineer for Zia Tyler. So here today to talk to you about a engineering contract with WSB and Associates to complete a traffic signal inventory. So just a little bit of a background, you know, we, over the past, our traffic signal system is old. We've made a lot of progress, and we still continue to make progress with really updating the electronic components of our traffic signal system over the past three years, our traffic signal modernization master plan. But we still have a lot of infrastructure from the poles, the conduit, the wiring, that's quite old. Some of these are probably 50 years old or more. Lifespan for typical intersection structure, you're thinking 20, 25 years. So we're well past that. Here are just a couple of pictures of different intersections. What you see at the very top, kind of those red circles, is this is Fleschel and Lake, probably one of the oldest signal structures. You got an older mast arm there, but you also, on the other side of the intersection, just have span wire going across, because the mast arm's no longer there. We've got places like there in the center of the screen, where you got a mast arm, but there's that wire that's running right underneath the mast arm. That's our cable. I'm sure we had conduit that collapsed, we needed to get wire there, so we just ran it overhead. Also, a lot of times, our technicians go in to work on the traffic signals, that cabling's been out there quite a while, insulation will start falling off, it's brittle. So those are conditions that are not ideal, that cause maintenance and operation issues. And so we want to get a handle on inventory of that system. How old are these structures? What are the condition? And put together a priority list of how do we start in replacing some of these. For example, we just opened a bid yesterday to reconstruct West Gentry at West MLK because of some concerns out there with those, the age and condition of those mast arms. So that's a little bit of the history and why we want to go into this. Some of the tasks that you have, we have 149 signalized intersections in the city. So they'll do some background data collection, and then they'll actually go out there in the field and inventory each of these, get mast arm links, what's the condition of these, provide an assessment, and then give that back as a GIS database. And so kind of how that plays into, over the past year or so, Sarah McCracken and our traffic operations folks have started to implement City Works. So it's a work order system, and has a GIS component of that, and so we can feed that information into this and keep this information up through this process. So, and we did select WSB and Associates. So as a little background, the engineering department recently did a request for qualifications for engineering services of different types. WSB was identified as one of those firms that would provide traffic services. They do have a local office and a lot of history of doing work in the area, and they also have some different capabilities that we thought fit well with this scope of services. So with that, it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with WSB and Associates to complete a traffic signal inventory in the amount of $158,000.
Any question for Cameron?
I have a question. Cameron, when you were doing your assessment, did you find other areas of the city that you thought may need signals while you were studying?
New traffic signals?
Yes.
So this specific contract really is looking at existing intersections and the condition of those signal poles. You know, on a daily basis, you know, we may get a request from a citizen, and we have to do additional studies on those, and those just occur over time. For example, along with the bid yesterday, we did also, part of that contract is to construct a new signal at Grande, Old Noonday. So that would be a new traffic signal that would be also being constructed soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Cameron?
Move to approve M6.
Second.
Got a motion by Winn, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. M7.
So M7, it is an engineering contract with HDR Engineering to complete the South Tyler Mobility Study in the amount of $493,411. So a few questions to kind of answer as we talk about this is, what is the study area? Why this study? What is maybe a little different about this study? So first, here on the map, the area in blue, surrounded by blue is our study area. Really, it's bounded by Grande, Old Bar to the north, FM 2813 to the south, Paloxi Drive to the east, and Holly Tree Cherry Hill Drive to the west. South Broadway, as we know, it's actually 47th on the most congested roadways in Texas. So there have, and there's a lot of undeveloped area. The yellow pockets there that you see on this map are undeveloped pieces of property. So we know this area's going to continue to grow. The green are some developments that are currently under construction or mostly residential. Some of those yellow components are commercial retail, so those are going to be big traffic generators. Also, you've got a couple arterials, major arterials in this area, not a whole lot of future arterials. New Copeland is the main potential that's on our master street plan, that would be extension south from Grande over to Paloxi. We also have several collectors, those are all the dashed lines that are future to be built. So we know that these are going to be taking place. South Broadway's been studied quite extensively in the past, and most of the time, there was not a consensus on what to do, and so the focus has been on alternate routes. And Tech Dot's taking the lead, and doing, has a lot of projects in the pipeline from Paloxi, Old Jacksonville, and Jones Quarter, to widen those. So they're doing their part at looking at these alternate routes of how do we move traffic around South Tyler. But there's a need to look at the city streets. What can we do from the future connectivity of this area to improve traffic flow? If we just sit here and wait, these are going to happen piecemeal. So what can we, as the city, take to do, be more proactive, look at an overall, big view, to say, these are the priority streets, these are the alignments that we want that's going to work best to help move traffic in the future, and hopefully improve things as well? So a couple of components to hit on as far as tasks. There's a big, heavy piece of traffic modeling. So it's called travel demand modeling, where basically you look at origin destinations, you look at improvements to the network. If you have this, this roadway piece in, what improvement does it do? If you have this one, what does it do? So it helps us prioritize, as we look at our resources of the city, where do we need to put that? Also, we'll be looking at some short-term improvements, is, what are maybe just some, maybe it's not a brand-new roadway, but Grande and Broadway, what improvements could we do on those Grande approaches to the intersection to help make that a more efficient intersection and improve traffic flow with our signal timing? And another component is cross-accessing connectivity. Broadway developed, where we didn't have cross-access requirements between businesses, and also it developed without a median, a median came in later. So you end up with, a lot of times, if you want to go to the adjacent property, you have to go out on Broadway, go down, just go in another driveway. So we want to take a look at what kind of things could we do just to help clean up maybe some of that congestion that's occurring because people want to go to adjacent properties? So that's kind of the, a couple different ways that we're looking more at the city streets, and the overall connectivity, and some of this access that we could do on the city side that's not maybe specifically on Broadway, that's been studied extensively in the past. And that's kind of the goal, and give us some power organization for hopefully improving things in the, in the future. So it is recommended that City Council authorize the city manager to execute an engineering contract with HDR Engineering to complete the South Tyler Mobility Study in the amount of $493,411.
Cameron, we, it was about a month or so ago, we had that open house with Tech Dot down at the substation, police substation down south, and they're about to do a lot of work on this section of Broadway, and then going even further south from there. Where does this study fit into what they are doing? Is it going to be done before they finish their project, during their project? Or what are we doing with Tech Dot to coordinate work on that?
Sure. So the Tech Dot project that they're looking at on South Broadway includes some median work on South Broadway, and then really the additional of a third lane south of Cumberland, and some additional improvements through that area. I believe currently, that project's not slated till probably 2028 or beyond that, before they actually do any of those improvements. But as part of the study, we'll be looking at, say, 2033 or longer, and what we'll do in the modeling piece is we'll assume that those Tech Dot improvements are in place.
Okay.
And then, as we add in these city pieces, how does that affect the network and any changes that we need to make to our street network that we, we see happening in the future? So we'll be taking into account those improvements, Tech Dot, and then giving us some guidance going forward.
Good. I didn't want us to do a study, and then in five years, it's obsolete, because Tech Dot has come in and completely changed what we've studied, so, okay, that's good. Thank you, Cameron.
You know, this, this study is kind of a aftermath of Walsham. And when we did, talked about the Walsham deal, and talked about putting that on the master street plan, everything was conceptual. So it was just kind of the idea that we're going to get from point A to point B, and so it was just kind of a crayola on a map. And as we all know, that didn't turn out so well. And so we're doing this study kind of instead of, so when we do this study, do we take it to the next level where it's not really conceptual, and we're really making sure we're not going through a cemetery, or going through, I mean, do we actually get into the weeds?
Yeah, so, to kind of put it in perspective, right now, we are doing a preliminary engineering report on Shiloh Road. So that includes detailed survey, looking, working with adjacent property owners, a very detailed geometric look, schematic development. And so on the other end, you have the master street plan discussion. This kind of falls in between the two. We're not going to be doing full survey out there to do this. We will be looking at contours, survey data that we have available, looking at those environmental constraints. And so really, there's kind of two components. We'll do the traffic modeling, looking at these links and the connections, and then another task in there is to actually look at specific routes and alignments. So then you'll be looking at, hey, what is a environmental constraint that we can't go through, or here are wetlands or different alignments and topography that makes a better connection? Or we'll look at where these streets intersect on, say, Cumberland, or on Paloxi, are these the ideal locations? And that's another goal, is if we can go in there and better tie these down as a city and say, this is where we want it to connect when those developments come in, we're not sitting there waiting on them to kind of tell us what maybe works best for them, or what they want to do. We, we've already studied that, and we've gone to that next level to help get...
So at what point do you actually talk to landowners, or so that, all of a sudden, they don't see a map with a road going through their property, and they're not aware of it?
Absolutely. So we have included tasks within this scope for stakeholder engagement. So as we're looking at some of these bigger tracts of land to, and we start putting things on paper to go sit down with them and talk with them about, this is what we're seeing, what are you planning? How does this fit with your plan? How can we make these things work together? So we have included tasks within this scope of work to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Cameron?
Cameron, a few years back, DC, before COVID, or before Cameron, we did the 69 Broadway study with Tech Dot, which we didn't go through with, so we decided not to widen Broadway. But a lot of that had to do with intersection modification. You mentioned like Grande and Broadway, and how to make those intersections faster, quicker, better. Are you able to access that information from that study from five years ago with, with Tech Dot?
So I have gotten some of the public engagement piece, I believe, from that study, but we will, as we dig into this deeper, we will definitely pull as much information on the past of what has been done and studied, and with that, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Move to approve M7.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cameron. Jacob.
Good morning, Mayors and Councilors. Good morning, including Tyler Water Utilities here, and I'm here to present item M8, which is USIC Locating Services Agreement. So currently, the City of Tyler has a large and growing distribution, collection, and stormwater system that is owned and maintained by the City of Tyler. We have approximately 745 miles of water line, 710 miles of sewer line, and 175 miles of storm sewer line. Those, those...
Those quantities are increasing all the time with development. So when we combine these lengths, it's actually 1,450 miles long, which is the equivalent from going to Tyler to San Diego. So this helps me put into perspective the massive amount of infrastructure that we have within the footprint of Tyler that we have been locating and protecting with our team of in-house locators. The city has had between three to six locators at a time, working on locating this infrastructure to keep flags and paint on the ground. So currently, the city follows the process laid out above here for locating our facilities. Contractor or excavator will notify the service center for the water and sanitary sewer, and then they'll also notify the stormwater department for the stormwater infrastructure. And then they'll also call Texas 811 for the remaining fiber, electric, and gas lines. The service center and stormwater departments will each generate a ticket for their respective locators to get the area marked. And we'll do this as soon as possible with the resources we have. Some of the tickets that are generated can be rather large, and depending on backlog, it could take up to five days for us to get those areas located. So a more standard industry practice is what's laid out below here, where the excavator will notify Texas 811. Texas 811 will then notify USIC and the city. And then USIC will get the area located within 48 hours. So USIC is currently locating for a number of utilities in the east Texas and the Tyler area. They have a well-established presence in the area. So I mentioned that depending on the workload, it may take up to five days for us to locate a ticket. This is due to the explosion of right-of-way permit applications that have been submitted to the city in recent years. As seen here, from 2020 to 2021, we saw 261% increase in approved right-of-way applications. From 2021 to 2022, it increased 120%. And as of June 1st, we're projecting about another 35% increase for 2023. So this massive increase can be attributed to the fiber build-out and upgrade that is going on around the city. Existing providers are replacing outdated material, as well as new internet providers installing infrastructure to establish their internet distribution system to the city of Tyler. So due to this increase in the past few years, we have reached the point that outsourcing the utility locating services to USIC is the best path forward for the city of Tyler. So with that, I'd like to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with USIC Locating Services, LST, not to exceed $200,000 for the services associated with locating, marking the city of Tyler water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater infrastructure.
Any questions for Jacob?
Yeah, Jacob, under this, I mean, it makes a lot more sense what you're proposing here, what's being proposed. Will USIC assume the liability for mislocating or not locating a utility?
So there is an investigation process that we would go through if the utility was not located correctly and damage occurred to it. So USIC is going to be using our mapping system, and then they're also using physical attributes and field. They're using devices that they hook up to the utility to get a positive feed on. So when all those resources are exhausted and damage still occurs, there would be an in-depth investigation as to who was really...
So you could have a situation where, well, you didn't have it on your city map, and that's why you could have that situation still out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move to approve M.8.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Winn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. Kate.
This is a contract award for consent decree project, the group five open cut rehab. This project's design was started in July of 2022, where they engineering services agreement with KSA. The remedial measures design in this project consists, or overall consists of 428 manholes, 59,000 linear feet of gravity main remediation, and 640 point repairs. This was divided into five design packages. The manhole package, CIPV package, and pipe bursting are all currently in progress and have been awarded. This is for traditional gravity main construction. The gravity main reroute is actually in design right now. So this specific scope covers remediation of multiple sanitary sewer mains. So about 7,100 linear feet of open cut, 503 sanitary sewer point repairs, about 90 manholes, and 13 access chambers. Construction is expected to start in July of 2023 and end in July of 2024. In this map, you can see a lot of the work is going to be done in that southeast portion of the city. We had three bidders that bid on this project, and the low bidder was CNA Construction at We've worked with CNA Construction before. They're currently working on a consent decree project for us. So I'm requesting that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the consent decree group five open cut rehabilitation bid 23-own-39 with CNA Construction LLC for $6,638,512.64 and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate? Well, you can sure spend some money.
Yeah, we need to...
That's why I'm trying to get other people up here to help me out, right?
Yeah, somehow, like I said, we need to promote like cleanest sewer system in Texas or something. Get some benefit out of this.
Move to approve M.9.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Emptying. Nikki.
Good morning, Mayor and councilors. My name is Nikki Ingram. I'm a project engineer for Tyler Water Utilities. I'm here to present agenda item M.10 to award a construction contract for the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Clarifier and Filter Rehabilitation Project. The project is going to be done at Golden Road Water Treatment Plant. The work will be on filters 11 through 14 and consist of removal and disposal of existing filter media and filter underdrain, and the installation of new filter media, underdrain systems, and surface wash systems. The work being done on clarifiers 3 and 4 will consist of removal and replacement of existing clarifier mechanisms, effluent weirs, isolation gates, and associated electrical and controls. We received three bids. The first bid was from Graycon Construction Inc. in the amount of $4,523,280. The second bid was for Stole Mechanical Contractors LLC in the amount of $4,653,780. And the third was for McKinnis Brothers Construction Inc. in the amount of $5,365,000. Staff and engineers recommend going with Graycon Construction Inc. for those bidder. So if awarded, it'll be a 21-month construction contract. They will begin construction on October 1st, 2024. And part of this longer wait time is because no treatment units can be out of service between April and September. And approximately, the lead time for underdrains and clarifier mechanisms is 26 to 30 weeks. And the estimated completion date is April of 2025. So I'm here to request that city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Graycon Construction Inc. for the construction of the Golden Road Water Treatment Plant Clarifier and Filter Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $4,523,280 and adopt a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
So you're saying the plant won't be out of service during the process?
No, it will not be out of service.
So is there ever a point where we're done and everything with the plant is good? We don't spend more money for a while?
Well, we're always going to have to maintain what we have, so...
So that's true.
Partly why you're having to spend, yeah, the amount of money you are is because we didn't in the past.
Catching up.
You're catching up for decades.
Deferred maintenance.
All right. Any other questions for Nikki?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Nikki. All right, now we are to board appointments. Cassandra, are you doing this?
I can't.
If you could do it, that'd be great. Is today your birthday?
Oh.
Happy birthday. And Flag Day. Happy Flag Day.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah.
You told me when I hired on that we sung "Happy Birthday" to the employees. Don't do it?
No. I'm nicer than he is.
Today, I'm requesting that the city council consider appointing a member to the parks board due to a vacancy on the board. I've attached four applications. The board has requested that Richard Heffler be appointed, and so I cancel. Which person? Richard Heffler. So at this time, I request that the city council consider appointing a member to the parks board due to a vacancy on the board.
Okay. I did talk to Leigh Anne, and that's who she had recommended as well, so I understand the motion.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis, for Richard Heffler to be on the parks board. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, consent agenda. Anything to be pulled or approved as is? Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
The motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, a few items of note. Sales tax figures available from the Texas Comptroller's website indicate our sales tax revenues deposited for this coming Friday are $4.755 million. This compares to revenues of $4.543 million for the same period last year. The actual increase for the month compared to the same month last year was 4.67%. And to put that in perspective, the statewide monthly average was 0.69% increase in sales tax revenue collections for cities. So Tyler still looks very good in regards to its economy. Some other items, on June 7th, so last week, Mayor Warren and County Judge Neil Franklin convened the annual Tyler Smith County Emergency Medical Services, the EMS Emergency Agent, Administrative Agency, along with their contractors, UT Health EMS staff, and the city attorneys, fire chief, and the police chief. This requires meeting per the contract that we have for our EMS service to consider the annual report, the medical control board report, and the possible annual contract extension. So, you know, it's one of those things, you see the analysis all over, our EMS runs, it's one that does not require any subsidies from the city or the county for those services. And one of the checks we have, though, is the mayor, a member of the council, and then the county judge, and then a member of the commissioners' corps, meet every year to review as far as what was the performance measures, and then also what was the response to that service from our local hospitals. And so the response time for the 2022 year required 90% response time compliance. UT Health EMS complied or exceeded that requirement in all the different alcohol categories that they have. Also, the medical control board, which is made up of doctors from UT Health and Krista Strini, mother Frances, meet and provide annually a, as far as their performance levels or ratings for the UT Health EMS. And so of those that participated in the annual service ratings on a scale of zero to five, provided an average rating of 4.57. And so with the compliance and rating met per the contract, the contract was renewed for another year. So just kind of a bit of, just something that goes on behind the scenes, but make sure our community knows about as they are, as far as the lifeblood, and as far as our EMS are taking care of them in times of need. The library held its summer kickoff event last Monday, and it was a great success. 650 children and adults attended to visit booths, play games, take on the bounce houses, and also courses, and overall have fun. We had 146 kids sign up for the event at the Summer Reading Challenge, bringing the total registration for this year to 899. And so we want to thank our fire and police departments for the grilling 600 sliders for the attendees. And so we are grateful to all those who are participating. We had city and departments that have different booths, Main Street, Organizational Development, Parks, Keep Tyler Beautiful, and Transit. And so they really did an incredible job. We had quite a few other groups that were out there participating. And it's always good to make sure that we keep, as far as keeping our kids reading and during the summer while they're not in school. And one of the pieces that we, I want to kind of bring attention to is our police department continues to make sure that it is prepared for when those awful situations occur. When we saw with the Uvalde school shooting now, a little over a year ago, difficulty came in breaching different doors, getting into different areas. And one of the things our police department did to make sure that they are prepared for those types of emergencies was to go ahead and order what was called a Conex breaching box. So think of those Conex boxes that you see, but this is one specifically designed to be able to go in and to learn how to be able to breach doors, break out windows, get into buildings, into rooms, without having to actually do that during the emergency. So you're prepared, you continue to go through the training, you know how to be able to do it, and then be able to replace it, so that you're able to kind of continue to go out there and to train on that forcible entry. And so they were able to have their Conex breaching box installed a past couple weeks ago. We even had the streets department jump in to help them make sure that they had a pad site to be able to put that on over towards the gun range area. And so it's something we are very, as far as excited to be able to have that for the training purpose. Again, it is always important to train, 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 so that when those situations occur, we are able to go in and do what we can to save life and property. And so, and as the mayor noted, my final piece of note is that we have a very important birthday today. The city clerk who keeps all of this moving and is, keeps this meeting as far as in order and that we are, that we don't go to jail every day, which is always important. And so Cassandra's birthday today, and so happy birthday, Cassandra.
Is this what we said? Go ahead. I wanted to mention to everybody, but Ed, too, I did have an email about a recycling truck driver from Citizen who noticed, and her name, Leroy, make sure, is it Shamaya? Shamaya Hopkins is her name. Anyway, the Citizen wrote, emailed me and said that, I guess I was watching the whole thing, recycling truck drove up, picked up the trash bin, dumped it, and something fell out of the, did not make it into the truck, fell on the, on the street. And the driver got out, went around, threw it back in the truck, cleaned the street up, and moved on. And they were impressed enough that, you know, this driver cared enough to get out and do that, that they wanted me to know, and I told them that I would make sure I recognized Shamaya Hopkins. And, you know, also, I think Leroy, you know, those type of attitudes flow from leaders who are setting up that kind of environment. So, you know, grateful that we've got people like that working for the city, so I wanted to recognize them.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a final word to say, if you don't mind? I want to thank the Penelletti Council for being here today and us recognizing them and the great work that they're doing in the community. Our attorney is also a member, along with many other city staff. That's members of the Penelletti Council. And also Ms. Charlotte Adams Graves, who took over when the late Freeman Sterling passed away, so we wanted to recognize her here. And if you would take a photograph with them at the end, sir? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Come and see us second and third, fourth Wednesday of each week, month. Yes, I got it.
Be at high point of your month.
Yeah.
All right. Nothing else? Go ahead.
Back to Leroy and kudos to him. The city manager gave us some information recently about the debris storm cleanup. City spent over $500,000 unbudgeted to help out the citizens. So Leroy, thank you for your group, and thank you, Ed, for finding money in the budget. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.